I'd like to bring this meeting of the Williamsburg James City County School Board to order. Is there a motion to certify closed session?
Madam Chairman, I certify to the best of each member's knowledge, the Williamsburg James City County School Board while in closed session discussed only public business matters, lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements as stated in Virginia law and that only such public matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Second, Ms. Hummel.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Serza?
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
Moving on to item 3.1, Ms. Serza, would you please take the role?
Dr. Beers.
Here.
Ms. Cook.
Here.
Mr. Dowell.
Here.
Ms. Hummel.
Here.
Mr. Kelly.
Here.
Mrs. Young.
Here.
Ms. Ombi.
Here.
Moving on to item 3.2, is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Madam Chairman, of approval, the agenda is presented this evening.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Serza?
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
Moving on to item 4.1, the organization of the board and appointment of the chair, I will pass the gavel on to Dr. Heron.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Over.
May I have a motion to open the floor for nominations for Chair of the School Board to serve for the calendar year 2020?
They're moved.
Second.
I have nominations for Chair.
Yes, Madam, yes, Dr. Heron, I move that, I propose that Lisa Ombi be the Chair for the 2020 to 2021. Have I said that right? Anyway, that she be our Chair for this next year.
Second.
Are there further nominations? Nominations for Chair for the School Board are closed. The motion is to approve Ms. Lisa Ombi as Chair of the Williamsburg James City County School Board for the 2020 calendar year. Ms. Serza, please call the role.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
Congratulations, Ms. Ombi. I will pass the new Chair back there.
Get the gavel back.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Okay, moving on to item 4.2, is the appointment of the Vice Chair?
Madam Chair, I move, I move that Julie Hummel be appointed Vice Chair for the calendar year 2020.
Nomination has been made. There are, actually we-
I move, yeah, I move that the nominations be closed.
Yes. Thank you, Dr. Beers. Ms. Serza, would you please take a vote?
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
Moving on to item 4.3, appointment of the parliamentarian. Is there a nomination for parliamentarian for this?
Yes, Madam Chair, I move to nominate Jim Kelly as parliamentarian for the next year.
And is there a motion to close the nomination?
I moved.
Ms., Ms. Serza, it's been closed. Would you take a vote, please?
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
Okay. Moving on to item 4.1, appointment of clerk and deputy clerk. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that the School Board appoint Ms. Janet Serza as clerk and Ms. Starr Robinson as Deputy Clerk for the Williamsburg James City County School Board through 2020.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Young. Any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Serza?
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
Moving on to item 4.1, appointment of superintendents designee. Is there a motion?
Madam Chairman, of approval, Dr. Corey Murphy to be the superintendent's designee to attend meetings of the School Board in the absence or inability of the superintendent to attend through 2020.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Serza?
Mr. Dowell.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
Item 4.6, appointment of member to the 21st Century Career and Ready Advisory Committee. Is there a motion?
Is that the CTE?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, I didn't sound. I want to make sure I got the right one. I nominate Sandy Young to be on the CTE Committee for the calendar year 2020.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Serza?
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
Item 4.7, appointment of member to the Special Education Advisory Committee or CAC. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move appointment of Kira Cook to be the School Board appointment, appointee to the Special Education Advisory Committee.
And is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Serza?
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
Item 4.8, appointment of two School Board members to serve on the Student Advisory Committee. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to move that the School Board appoint Mr. Greg Dowell and Ms. Sandy Young to the Student Advisory Committee for the calendar year 2020.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Serza?
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel. Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
Item 4.9, appointment of two members to the Policy Committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to recommend that the School Board appoint Ms. Julie Hummel and Dr. Jim Beers to the Policy Committee for the calendar year 2020.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Serza?
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
Item 4.10, appointment of two members to serve on the School Liaison Committee.
Madam Chair, I would like to appoint two members to be Lisa and Kira. Lisa Ombi and Kira Cook.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Serza?
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Item 4.11, appointment of School Board member to serve as the trustee on the New Horizons Board.
Madam Chair, I would like to nominate Jim Kelly to be a member of the New Horizons Board for the 2020 calendar year.
Dr. Beers, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'd like to, it's of note that Mr. Kelly serves as Chair of this Board and represents the Division well.
No further discussion. Ms. Serza?
Mr. Dowell.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Sorry.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
Item 4.12, appointment of school member to serve on the WHRO Board.
Madam Chair, I move that we appoint Dr. Jim Beers to be the, our representative on the WHRO Board. I do want to mention that he is currently the Chair of that Board.
Thank you so much. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Serza?
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
Item 4.13, approval of regular School Board meeting dates for 2020. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that for the approval of regular School Board meeting dates for 2020 is listed on the calendar in the agenda.
Presented this evening.
Say that again? Presented this evening. As presented this evening.
Thank you, Mrs. Young. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Serza?
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. We made it through that. Thank you, everyone, for agreeing to serve in your various leadership capacities. I'm looking forward to a great rest of the year. I'm going to now toss it back to Dr. Heron for announcements.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My report this evening begins with a heartfelt Happy New Year and welcome back to our students, families, and staff. I hope everyone had a relaxing winter break filled with fun and spent time with loved ones. Sadly, some families were separated over the holidays because of military deployments. To brighten spirits of our servicemen and women, the second graders at Stonehouse Elementary School created holiday cards for the troops. Each card was lovingly decorated by students and mailed by staff for delivery over winter break. What a sweet gesture for the men and women who sacrificed so much for our country. Speaking of holiday cards, before the break, I visited three of our schools to say a special thank you to student artists whose work was selected for the Division's holiday cards. Claire Bird Baker's Bailey Hollenbeck created the snowmen used for the staff card. Hornsby Middle School student Enslie Lang's work entitled Warm Together was used for the video message for families. And Lafayette High School's Kaylee Foster created the Cardinals artwork pictured on the printed cards to our community partners. We are fortunate to have such incredibly talented students in our schools. The start of a new year is a good time for families to review and update their contact information in parent view. As we know, the winter months can bring some snow days in Williamsburg. In the event of inclement weather, we share important announcements and closing information directly with families and staff through email, phone calls, and text messages. Now is an excellent time to check to make sure the contact information we have on file for you is up to date. Also, if you haven't already done so, you can sign up to receive text messages from WJCC schools by texting the word YES to 675-87. The School Division does not charge a fee for families to receive text messages. However, standard data and message rates may apply depending on the family's cellphone provider. And finally, a quick message about cold and flu season. The Health Department reports there was an early outburst of flu in our area right before the holidays, and that trend is continuing. WJCC schools' custodial teams work hard to clean and disinfect areas that students and staff frequently touch in our schools. Parents, we would like to ask for your help in reducing the potential spread of germs as well. If your children are not feeling well, or if they are running a fever, please keep them at home until they are fever-free without the use of medication for at least 24 hours. Please encourage your children to cover their mouths when they cough or sneeze, and be sure they're washing their hands often with warm water and soap to reduce the spread of germs. Let's kick off to 2020 with a healthy and happy start. Madam Chair, that concludes my announcements for this evening. Thank you.
So much, Dr. Heron. Moving on to item 6.1, this is an opportunity for citizens to provide comment. I believe we have two citizens. I will turn it over to Mr. Kelly to share.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It is at this point in our meeting where citizens are invited to address the Board. Those citizens desiring to speak should have submitted speaker cards to the clerk prior to the start of tonight's meeting. These speakers are asked to come to the podium when their names are called, state their names for the record, and direct their comments to the Chair of the Board. It is the Board's interest and desire that all comments are heard and respected, hence citizens are asked to not engage in applauding, verbal outbursts, or any other type of demonstrations during the presentations. Personnel matters are not considered in public meetings. Therefore, the Board requests that all speakers refrain from making reference to specific individuals in any form or fashion. Though the Board does not respond to your comments during the meeting, your comments are being heard and appreciated. Each speaker is allocated three minutes to make their presentation, and the Board asks that you respect this time limitation. Also, please be reminded that no time may be yielded to another speaker. Your acceptance and adherence to these guidelines will be greatly appreciated. Thank you, Madam Chair. My instructions are concluded.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Ms. Hummel?
Scott Bowser?
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board members, Dr. Heron, and also our WJCC staff. Yes, I am Scott Bowser coming to you again, and I have a quiz for you. CEO, options, ALL, off-site on Centerville Road. Maybe wondering what does those stand for? Those are some of our alternative education programs we've had over the years, even options at James River. And I'm coming to you as a teacher, and as budget season is right here, and maybe not for this year, but for years to come, we need to look at again some other resources, other programs for our students. Not everyone does quite well in a traditional classroom setting as this former classroom was at one time. And over the past 20 years, I've seen our students change. We all know they are going through some, going through some circumstances that when I went into teaching, I never thought I would have to address, I would have to go ahead and try to deal with, and try to work with. I also can tell you, the programs that WJCC has had, has worked. The All Academy about six, seven years ago, back at the Stryker Building, we had to go ahead and eliminate that due to budget. I remember the parents coming, speaking to that, the students as well, wanting to keep that program alive for seventh and eighth grade students. I'm not going to go on to alternative education, the benefits for it, because we know. But I do want you to look at that, and I also want to bring up something that was brought about six, seven years ago. And again, that is ROTC. To please look at that. We've talked about it before. We have a large military population. And also, coming as a teacher from Virginia Beach, we also have some great former people from Virginia Beach that know a little bit, something about that now in our staff that we can use as a resource. So again, in your planning, not just this year, but years to come, please consider that. And that's coming from a teacher that's seeing a great need for it for our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bowser.
Kirby Suttle? Good evening. Kirby Suttle. I come to you today to ask the question about Jamestown High School having a varsity football team. I've heard several rumors all over town that they're not even sure if they're going to have a varsity team, let alone a JV team. I asked this question. I have a son, and he loves football. Second thing I wanted to ask was, I brought up the topic earlier in the year through email to several of you about maybe needing a shed or storage area for James Blair to have somewhere to store their football gear other than just a closet, you know, and inside the school that their things could be maybe messed with while their sports were gathering their stuff up. Those are my two concerns. Also, if Jamestown's not going to have a high school football team, how soon could someone know so they could get their child transferred to somewhere else to play football? Because weightlifting program does start in February. Thank y'all.
Thank you. That concludes comments. Moving on to proposed agenda items. Item 7.1, VSBAC Code of Conduct for School Board Members. This is something that we review each year.
So, are we basically just?
And we'll vote on it on the next, next meeting.
So, this looks pretty much like, it's always looked. Does anyone have any questions or comments that you would like to discuss?
Most of us are familiar with this.
I took a long look at it over the week.
Okay, it's pretty, unless there's further discussion, we'll move on to the next agenda item. Okay. Moving on to the Program of Studies. Before we move on to that item, I do have a statement I would like to read. As a member of the WJCC School Board, I acknowledge that I have a personal interest in the WJCC School Internship Program outlined in the Program of Studies because the company which my husband owns and which I work for, Land Tech Resources, Inc., currently serves an internship site for WJCC students. However, I believe that I am able to participate in the consideration of and vote on the Program of Studies fairly and in the public interest. With that, I will turn it over to Dr. Heron.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Annually, we present changes in the Program of Studies and provide the Board with information about that. And it's my delight this evening to welcome our new Director of Counseling and Career Readiness, Ms. Jessica Walters, to present the information this evening. I'd also like to welcome all of the CNI coordinators that are here and support this evening, should there be questions about individual subjects. And thank you very much for being here this evening as well. Ms. Walters? I would like to say that Ms. Walters has been here a very short time, and she's spent a lot of time and energy getting up to speed with our process and our very comprehensive Program of Studies. And I know she's been looking forward to this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board, and Dr. Heron. It is my pleasure to present to you tonight the proposed Program of Studies for 2020, 2021. You each should have three paper copies of handouts in front of you. I'd like to note that the page numbers I'll be referencing this evening will be on the, from the PDF Program of Studies copy, yes. Updated charts were not able to be put into the redline copy due to formatting concerns, but they are available in the PDF Program of Studies. Tonight's proposed revisions and updates assist our Program of Studies in continuing to become a more user-friendly and relevant tool to aid students and families in considering which courses, programs, and options offer the best foundation for achieving their goals. Maybe?
We're good. Sorry.
Standing on one foot.
Back one. Is it working?
I brought one. Want me to try that?
Right there, that last one. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you. Sorry about that. So if we could just go back one?
Just to do it from there rather than?
Thank you. As you can see here, the Program of Studies aligns with Williamsburg James City County Strategic Plan to Elevate Beyond Excellence specifically related to Goals 1, 2, and 3. Before we begin, I would like to thank the many different groups and stakeholders that met, reviewed information, and provided input over a period of many months in order to develop the Program of Studies proposed this evening. I would also like to note that any new courses added to the Program of Studies went through the New Course Proposal Process, which includes an interdisciplinary committee review, and takes into account impacts on staffing, facilities, and other courses within the content area. For the 2019-2020 Program of Studies, we had extensive updates to include reformatting, new courses, and general revisions to create a much more user-friendly tool for families that was easily accessible online. Due to this, you will notice that there were not as many changes needed for the 2020-2021 Program of Studies to maintain the quality of the resource. We have updated the School Board Member section to reflect the new Board. Tonight, you'll hear about new courses, which include Honors English Grade VI, Dual Enrollment Health Science Options, and College Success Skills. We've also updated the list of course offerings for the New Horizons Career and Technical Education Center and course offerings and program model for the New Horizons Governor's School for Science and Technology to reflect New Horizons Regional Education Center updates. Overall, we've made minor adjustments to grammar and formatting to the proposed Program of Studies. Tonight, we will be highlighting the proposed changes to course descriptions and course updates for you. We've hyperlinked any verbiage pertaining to fees associated with a course to the student fee information webpage. We've updated the enrollment information to identify services for English-language learners through the age of 21. On Page 5, we've added language to the section related to repeating a class for strength to include a connection to athletic eligibility. Student athletes who are repeating a class for strength in which they originally earned a grade of D or higher will not have the repeated class count towards athletic eligibility. On Page 6, we've updated the work-based learning to reorganize the eight different types of work-based learning methods of instruction currently practiced in Virginia per the Virginia Department of Education Overview of Work-Based Learning Methods of Instruction. Also in this section, we included information about contacting the Division's career coach for more information, highlighting an increased level of services in this area. In the middle school program on Page 6, the Honors Level coursework description has changed. With the addition of Honors English VI, the Program of Studies now reads "Placement Into an Honors English Course" instead of specifically Honors English VII and Honors English VIII. Excuse me. Beginning on Page 10, within the high school program, diploma requirements related to earning a computer science credit within math, laboratory science, and fine arts or career and technical education descriptions is included within the diploma requirements chart. This is to note that AP Computer Science A may provide a standard credit to satisfy graduation requirements in either math, science, or CTE as noted below the chart. On Page 13, Section Students Transferring Into a Virginia Public School, the chart has been revised and reformatted to provide a thorough explanation of graduation requirements for transfer students as identified by- of Education's Seal for Excellence in Science and the Environment. The Virginia Department of Education established these two new seals in the spring of 2019 for eligible students in Virginia. Additionally, we've added language to identify that the State Board of Education's Advanced Mathematics and Technology Seal would be available to seniors through the graduating class of 2021 as per the VDOE notification in the spring of 2019 of the phasing out of this seal. On Page 15, within earning college credits in high school, we've added Item Number 2, Career and Technical Education (CTE) on-campus dual enrollment to capture the new proposed course offerings at Thomas Nelson Community College for Williamsburg-James City County students. Credits earned are clearly identified for families. On Page 16, we've updated virtual learning to state that to determine if a student has the skills necessary to be successful in the virtual learning environment, he or she will take a survey for online learning readiness in place of the test of online learning success specified in the prior Program of Studies. The test of online learning success is no longer available for use, and Williamsburg-James City County has created our own internal form to survey this information from our students. On Page 17, we are introducing experiential learning to describe and highlight opportunities for WJCC students in the areas of independent study and internship. This concludes our overall updates and revisions, and we will now move on to specific updates to course offerings and descriptions at both the middle school and high school level. I'd like to begin on Page 19 with the Middle School Course Offerings and Descriptions. We've added Honors English Grade 6. The addition of this course supports strategies in two WJCC strategic plan goals, Number 1 and Number 2, which address three opportunities to support students in reaching their potential. The first, providing a class that could serve students who were provisionally placed in the 5th-grade gifted Language Arts course but exited at the end of Grade 5 due to not meeting the criteria for permanent identification. The second, offering an access point to a more rigorous 6th-grade English course for students for whom we are trying to build more experience with rigor. And the third, extending the continuum of English Honors courses in middle school. Also in English, we've removed the prerequisite of passing the reading SOL the previous school year with a score of 450 or above for Honors English courses at all grade levels in middle school to increase flexibility of student access to higher-level coursework. Additionally, the strategy in place is that the decision to enroll in an Honors Level course is a team effort, including the parent, the student, the teacher, the school counselor, looking at the whole student. Moving to Page 21, under Science, the course descriptions for Science Grade 6 and for Life Science Grade 7 have been adjusted for ease in understanding for our community. Also beginning on Page 21, in Social Studies, the course descriptions for United States History to 1865, Grade 6, United States History 1865 to the present, Grade 7, Civics and Economics, Grade 8, have been adjusted for consistency in language used and specific concise course Also on Page 22, under Health and Physical Education, we've adjusted the physical education description related to adapted physical education to encompass the full scope of services provided. On Page 27, we've adjusted the course description within CTE Career and Technical Education for Inventions and Innovations, Grade 7, and Technological Systems, Grade 8, to be specific with learning experiences students will have and knowledge they will gain through the Moving into High School Course Offerings and Descriptions, overall, there have been course description updates and course offering changes in the following contents for high school: English, Math, Science, Social Studies, Health and Physical Education, and Career and Technical Education. On Page 29, beginning with English, we've adjusted the course description for Honors English 10 to remove the requirement of an in-depth summer assignment for this Honors Level course. Our practice is to require an in-depth summer assignment for AP Level coursework, not for Honors Level coursework. Also within English, we've removed the course The Nature of Mankind. This course is the last course remaining from the Pathways Project in High School Innovation, and we began transitioning to Commonwealth Innovations courses. You will note that this is also a change within Science. On Page 31, for College Composition 1 and 2, we've adjusted the course description to include language related to the six college credits students will earn from TNCC, which offer transferability by earning a C or better. We also highlighted that students will be duly enrolled with TNCC with this course. Also on Page 31, we've added the course College Success Skills, which offers a half a credit towards the high school diploma and one college credit from TNCC. This is a pilot course being offered at War Hill High School for early college students and is designed for students to take prior to starting on campus at TNCC rather than when they start as it is currently structured. Students will also be duly enrolled with TNCC when enrolled in this course. Beginning on Page 33, for Math, we've updated the suggested Core Course Sequence chart. Due to the size of the chart, it was not easy to read on a slide, so I would like to refer you to Page 33 of the Program of Studies for a visual. We've removed Algebra 1, Sequence 2 due to the removal of Algebra 1, Sequence 1 in the 2019-2020 school year, with students no longer taking this course in the 8th grade. It removes the need for Sequence 2 in 9th grade. On Page 37, within Science, as mentioned previously, we've removed the Nature of Mankind course as noted in English. On Page 39, we've adjusted the course description for Physics to update topics covered as aligned with the Virginia SOLs. On Page 40, within Social Studies, we've adjusted the course description for World History and Geography to 1500 and World History and Geography 1500 to the present to reflect the alignment with the SOLs. On Page 41, we've adjusted the course description for Virginia and US History to provide consistent language and to provide a more thorough explanation of the course to our community. On Page 43, we've changed the prerequisites for Humanities (US) to read World History 1 or 2 and World Geography in place of stating World History, making it clear that either World History course would prepare students and that only one course is required. Moving to Page 55, Health and Physical Education, we've adjusted the physical education description related to adapted physical education to encompass the full scope of services provided. We've updated the course description for Health and Physical Education 1 and 2 to include information related to biomechanics. In aligning with the updated Health and Physical Education SOLs, it was important to include biomechanics as a component of the Health and Physical Education program to ensure that students understand how the body moves when performing different tasks and skills. Also under Health and Physical Education, we removed the course Advanced First Aid and CPR. With the graduation requirement of CPR certification now included in the 9th grade or Health and Physical Education 1 curriculum, there's no longer a need for a separate course to teach this material. On Page 56, we've adjusted the course description for Drivers Education to reflect updated technology in vehicles. Moving to Page 59, under Career and Technical Education (CTE), we've removed the introduction to Health Occupations as a result of changes to the TNCC Program of Studies. Under Health and Medical Science, we're excited to introduce to you tonight three new dual-enrollment program opportunities now available to WJCC students. This provides the opportunity to take a course on TNCC campus and earn both a high school credit and college credits. These programs not only expose our students to challenging academics in a specialized field, but also open the door to opportunities for certification and employment within that field. Beginning on Page 59, Emergency Medical Technician (EMT) 1 and 2, this was adjusted to two separate courses. Course descriptions for both indicate that upon successful completion of EMT 2, students will have earned CPR certification and will have the opportunity to take the certification exam for becoming an emergency medical technician. Upon successful completion of both EMT 1 and 2, students will earn a total of two high school credits and eight college credits. On Page 60, Medical Assistant 1 and 2 were added as new opportunities for our students interested in becoming a certified clinical medical assistant in Virginia. The course description clearly outlines the skills students will learn in order to implement them in the workforce. As noted in both Medical Assistant 1 and 2 course descriptions, upon successful completion of both courses, students will have earned CPR certification and will have the opportunity to take the certification exam for becoming a certified clinical medical assistant in Virginia. Upon successful completion of both courses, students will have earned a total of two high school credits and 12 college credits. Also beginning on Page 60, Nurse Aid 1 and 2 were added this year to provide an opportunity for students to become a certified nurse aide and work in the medical field. The course description outlines the basic skills students will learn in order to work in the field. Upon successful completion of both courses, students will have earned a total of two high school credits and eight college credits. Additionally, students will have earned CPR certification and have the opportunity to take the certification exam for becoming a certified nurse aide in Virginia. I'd like to highlight important upcoming dates regarding the student course selection and registration process. This month, we are jumping right into classrooms and individual planning sessions with all of our rising 6th through 12th grade students. In February, we will be holding our Middle School Course Planning Night and Curriculum Fair and our High School Course Planning Night and Curriculum Fair. Also in February, our school counselors will be facilitating transition planning by visiting all of their feeder schools. And our course request window opens online for rising 6th through 12th grade students and families on February 17th and closes on March 2nd. This concludes our presentation for the Program of Studies for 2020-2021.
Thank you so much. Lot. Other questions?
So, Earl, when you started, well, first of all, I'd like to thank everyone for being here. I'm a little, it's like a wall of excellence back there. Everyone's sitting against the wall. It's a little intimidating. But you mentioned the redline version?
Yes.
And that something that the charts didn't work. Can you, I didn't quite catch that. Can you tell? So, if I'm reading the redline version, what's...
So, the charts such as the updated math chart and the charts from New Horizons couldn't be formatted in the redline version, so we kept them in the, the updated versions are in the PDF of the POS of the Program of Studies that you have, but we weren't able to get them into redline.
Okay. So, if I want to read one document that tracks what it's going to look like and what it looked like, is, does that exist?
The only thing not in the redline is the charts.
But I've then got to go find those and make sure that I'm, because I do, I will have questions about early college and dual enrollment.
Okay.
But I regret that I'm not prepared to ask them tonight, and I will send them via email and then ask them. But I presume we have to adopt this at the next meeting, correct?
That's correct. For the timeline, that would be incredibly helpful. When it comes to some of the new dual enrollment courses, we will present some more information about those in the budget as well, because there's a budgetary impact for the new Health Sciences courses. So, there'll be information we perhaps can respond to in that as well.
If there's any way for me to have one document that has everything that marked up, I would appreciate being able to look at that, even if it means the other things side by side where one's stricken and the other one is replacing it.
Okay.
Because then I know what I'm looking at, and I'm not having to try to crosswalk two documents.
I understand. I will certainly ask if we can make that happen for you. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd very much like to have that so that I can...
I appreciate you saying that, especially for somebody new like me, being able to have them side by side and compare and contrast the things that I just don't know.
I have a question.
Sure.
I'm looking at Page 66, which is the list of the career clusters for CTE, right? And I'm curious, and we went through this really quickly, are there other clusters, are there other clusters that are laid out or spelled out in the Program of Studies?
Page 66...
Yeah, I'm looking at Page 66. It's the back of 65, and the front says 65, it's New Horizons Career and Technical Education Center, and you turn it over, and it has these lists of career clusters.
Oh, these are the career, sorry, these are the course offerings at New Horizons, and this comes directly from New Horizons. It's approved by their board, and they provide it to us, and we include it.
Where are the other, okay. Okay, so, okay, okay, I got it.
Okay. Other questions? Yes.
I think, I believe you said that for 9th grade health, that students would be certified for CPR.
Yes.
Is that correct? Isn't that certification an annual certification? Students have to be certified annually, or whoever's doing CPR has to be certified annually?
So, the state of Virginia added that as a graduation requirement, and we embedded it through the Health and PE 1 class, that 9th grade PE. It is an annual certification, but with the content being taught there, we no longer found the need to have a separate additional course to teach that class for students because they were already learning it in 9th grade PE. And our course, sorry. Looking at enrollment historically for that course, the last time we offered a full course, and that was five students, was in 2010, 2011. One student took the course in 1617, and one student took the course in 1718. The separate standalone advanced CPR course.
I think it's required just once for graduation.
It's right.
They don't have to be required, they don't have to have CPR walking across the stage to be certified. They just have to have ones during their 19th, 12th year.
Correct.
And the only question I, I'm curious is, I think I know the answer, but I'm going to ask it anyway. Why some of the one-credit courses do not give, the credit can't apply towards graduation, and there are other one-credit courses that can be applied to graduation? I looked at a number of the one-credit courses, and they looked like really interesting courses that would tie directly into somebody's cluster, but they're not, it says this course is not, cannot be used to satisfy grad...
Could you give me an example? I'd be happy to look at it.
Now, watch, I'll find it.
Sorry.
No, 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 it's sort of highlighted, you can tell. When there is one, let me find one.
Are you talking about the elective courses within the core content areas?
Yeah.
So, those actually do count towards your overall credits towards graduation, but for example, Advanced Placement European History counts as an elective and doesn't count as a social studies-specific credit towards graduation? So, they're still earning a credit towards their overall credit needs?
So, it's still going to count?
Yes, absolutely.
All right, that's, yeah, the following courses are electives and do not satisfy the diploma requirements in the area of social studies.
Right.
So...
So, it counts as an elective.
So, they, they count as credits, the total number of credits?
Yep.
But they can't be used in the...
counts as an elective and doesn't count as a social studies specific credit towards graduation? So they're still earning a credit towards their overall credit needs?
So it's still going to count?
Yes, absolutely.
All right, that's, yeah, the following courses are electives and do not satisfy the diploma requirements in the area of social studies.
Right.
So.
So it counts as an elective.
So they, they count as credits?
Mm-hmm.
The total number of credits?
Yep.
But they can't be used in, okay. Well, how is that decision made?
So.
The only ones that are used are the required social studies courses?
Right.
Those are the only ones that count?
That can count.
Okay.
Towards the social studies diploma requirement.
My higher ed background, I have a different orientation towards that.
Yes, it's, the Virginia Department of Education tells us which ones can count.
And just for clarification, all of our high school credits are one credit?
I'm just thinking of it as a student.
I'd have to look, I think the large majority of them are one credit. I don't know if we have any half credit classes. I'd have to check. But for the most part, they're one credit, yes.
Right, which could equate to four credits or three credits or six credits at the community college level. But generally speaking, our high school students take a class and they earn a credit.
Yes.
So the college success skills counts as a half credit?
A half credit because it's one full college credit. It's, it doesn't encompass a full curriculum as one full credit would in our buildings.
I had, I had a question about the college success. Is that intended for them to take that before they take any of the other Thomas Nelson classes or at the same time?
So the goal of adding it in now is that they'll take it before they start the early college program. Currently, as it's structured, it is a course through the Virginia Community College System and they take it when they start. But the thought here is if they can take it before, they'll be more prepared.
We're piloting that in one school with the intention, if it works well, to roll it out to other schools next year.
But that's the intention. Why is it a grade twelve class?
Why is it grade twelve? Because most students in early college have finished their graduation requirements before they can do early college. And so they may be halfway through their last year, finish their requirements, take this class and then go to TNCC for the last semester.
So the idea is students would take that their first semester of their senior year.
Yes, correct.
So currently, that's the only requirement that Thomas Nelson has of our students who run the early college program. Like they have to take that.
Currently, they take it at Thomas Nelson.
Second semester of their senior year.
Second semester?
Yes, currently they take it at Thomas Nelson.
And now this pilot is going to be?
First semester.
First semester, but.
At school. To get them ready, yes.
Awesome, okay.
They just don't travel.
So my question about the whole Program of Studies as same question every year is going to be access and equity for all of these courses to make sure that the students in all of our high schools in particular that have equal opportunity to have ability to have access to the same classes. So the smaller schools, for example Lafayette, that might not, when it comes time for their interest level, like wherever they're going to be determining which courses they want to take. I just want to make sure that we are not limiting the smaller schools for access purposes. I think many of us feel very strongly about that on the board and it speaks directly to our goal number two, educational equity. So I just want that to be everyone's.
Absolutely.
Front and center that when we have these wonderful courses, but then a student finds out that they can't take it because they're not in the school that has enough students.
Or doesn't make because there, yes.
Yes.
So there's not enough interest.
I just really want that to be something that's front and center with everyone as we go through this.
Ms. Cook?
I'd like to, again, I'd like to take the time to read it to ask some, you know, more informed questions. But I'd like to build on what Ms. Hummel was saying. And, you know, this is a really robust list of classes and so not every class is offered every year.
Correct.
Or, you know, correct. So, and so, and if it's not, if a class doesn't make for many, many handful of years, then you, I presume, look at it and think about pulling it from the Program of Studies. So one can presume, looking at this, that everything listed makes at one of the high schools at least sometimes.
We're in the process, we started last year at really looking at classes that haven't made at any school in multiple years. But we're still in that process. So there still may be classes in here that haven't been taught in some time that we're working through.
Right. And, you know, and I know that you can get a culture at one school where something's very popular and maybe, you know, it's one language or whatever, where it's not necessarily popular. And I'm not interested in undoing that kind of energy or culture. But, you know, and I haven't figured out how to ask this question well. And I know that I've asked it a couple of times and made staff do a lot of work that probably wasn't helpful to anyone. But I do want to make sure that kids, at least in the course of their four years at school, if they're really interested in something and they're repeatedly interested in it, that they don't have to leave to take. And that, that's a concern of mine, that you could ask and ask and ask and then never get an opportunity. And I understand a class minimum in order for it to make, but I just wanted to echo Ms. Hummel's concern that.
I think some of these excellent comments and questions, we're about to invest and walk into a detailed analysis of our secondary school Program of Study and scheduling and how we schedule and the resources we put into that. And one of the key things that is asked at the beginning of that study is we form a group to lead us through that is what are our priorities as a school division? And so your comments tonight are very informative into that process as we, you know, consider equity and access to high level courses and maybe each student, every student have that same access. We can certainly start to incorporate some of that thinking as some of the priorities that we want to make happen as we move forward. Not everything's possible, but that's very helpful as we walk into that process, which Dr. Worley will be leading this semester.
I'm going to keep coming back to this.
It's okay.
So if the state doesn't, so what, I want to make sure you understand what you said earlier. The state has laid out the required clusters and courses, right? We can't deviate, we can't deviate from that. One of the things that I find interesting is, and because I'm always concerned, I'm looking at some of the things under fine arts. I'm looking at English and I'm looking at creative writing. You can't apply that. That's not considered a course that can be used in an English major. And I just, you know, because the state said it doesn't, right?
So it doesn't count as an, but that's one reason why we offer it though.
I get that.
Is to really provide an opportunity for students who have that interest.
I think it should be allowed to be part of somebody's Program of Studies where it's part of, it fulfills an English requirement. Maybe it is just an hour or whatever it might be. But, and I see that with the fine arts. It's, do you get college, not college? Does the state indicate if you're an orchestra three or two, that's a college credit or not?
The state doesn't indicate college credit only, high school credits?
In terms of the, and I don't mean college credits. I mean, I'm really focusing on the arts. And I, you know, everybody talks about how important they are. And if you have gifted students, just students in general, who are really, are really, are really excellent in terms of one art form or another. And they can't, it can't fulfill a cluster in that, you know, a course in that cluster because the state has said, well, we don't include that.
But they include them in the areas of electives. There are required, you have to have a required number of electives to graduate, including sequential. So if a student was an orchestra student, they were very strong and they took orchestra one and orchestra two, that would, that would meet that diploma requirement. So they may not be housed under English or social studies, but they, they do exist.
Is that made real, is that really made clear to the students?
Yes.
Do they fully understand?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
And the only other thing I'll say, I've asked this question before. If you have really talented middle school artists, I know in some divisions, if there are enough students like that, that, and you have a teacher who's qualified to teach it, they will offer a high school art course in that middle school. Do we have, does that ever come up? Will we ever?
I can't speak to the history on that. I haven't been here long enough quite yet. But, but that's certainly something I can look into and follow up with you on.
It's a major, it's a major, you know, plus in, in Reiko and Chesterfield. It's they, it's the bigger schools, obviously. But they have, they have a lot of students in middle schools who are superb artists or musicians, whatever it might be. And if there are enough of them, it's usually the case is there aren't enough students for that to make. There's usually a teacher who can handle that, but there may not, there just may not be.
Dr. Bears, we can certainly, you know, inquire as to what the other school systems do and how they accommodate those very individual needs of students and get that information for you.
And they may be there. I just, I don't, you know, if they're there, you know, I want them to get as much as they can, you know, early.
Absolutely. I will, I will look into this and follow up with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bears.
I just wanted to add, it's not, it's not the visual arts, but in our middle schools, we have exceptional theater programs.
Oh, yeah, I'm not, I'm talking about all the arts.
Yeah, just, yeah.
Absolutely. No, gosh.
I have a couple of comments and questions. And like Ms. Cook said, I probably will have more on the twenty-first because I would like to really look at the redline and wasn't able to do that. So forgive me, I might have more later.
That's okay.
But just building on what Dr. Bears was talking about with regard to the arts, I hope that when we look at secondary courses, if we can look at some structural barriers that we have for students to take classes. Like I know right now it is very difficult for students who want to take high level classes to also stay in band or stay in orchestra because they're just competing and conflicting. And I don't know if there's a way to fix that. But I know historically, some students have had to drop some of those related arts theater chorus because they want to take AP Calc. So like if, and I don't, I don't, I can't figure out how you fix that, but maybe we can.
I think as we go into this process again, we'll be looking to, you know, what history of students and what they've taken. We'll be looking into current numbers. We'll be looking to choices. We'll be looking into access and equity. And I know Dr. Worley is writing lots of notes as we discuss this this evening. You've got two pages already, just to get your perspective as she begins to work in that process. We, you know, we're not a huge school division, so we can't offer every single student, every single class they would wish to take. We have a limited number of staffing and very often the, our staffing skills and certifications drive what we can offer rather than our students' requests. But if it were totally driven from one end and not in a balanced way, then we would be letting teachers come and go in response to student needs. So there's a balance in there somewhere for stability of the system. But we do want to drive this from a student perspective. That's the objective ultimately.
And then just a couple of thoughts and questions. So with regard to the duly enrolled classes, again, as we're looking at kind of division wide, will we be looking at ways in terms of equity to ensure that all three high schools have the duly enrolled certified teachers? So I know that some high schools have the duly enrolled certified teachers, others don't. So at some, some high schools, it's duly enrolled because the teacher is approved and certified and other schools it's not. And is there a way to kind of equity?
The only way we can bring equity in that situation is to hire teachers who are qualified to teach dual enrollment and that's with a master's in their content area, I believe. And so there's restrictions that are brought in from outside. Having said that, we can look at staffing across the board to try to address some of that.
My concern there is, in addition to equity, I agree with Ms. Ombi. It's also just sort of planning, you know, personal experience is that, you sign up for a class and then only after your child's in it, you're like, oh, I didn't even know it was duly enrolled. Like you're, so it doesn't, because it depends on who, you can't advertise it because you don't know which teacher's going to be where. And so you can't put it in the Program of Studies because it could change overnight because it's dependent on a single teacher. So it really, it's very difficult, it's sort of happenstance, which.
Difficult for parents and students and purposes. And then just one, one last question. And I'm sure maybe more information is coming on the twenty-first, but I was very excited to hear about the new health related courses. And so was just wondering, is the plan that that will look more like early college? That's just students who are taking that, like the EMT I and II, that they would take that their senior year? Or what does that, when do they do that? Because it's off campus, it's at Thomas Nelson.
It would be during their senior year, but it would be at the same time that they're still at their homeschool. So.
Fourth block.
Right now, it would be fourth block is what we're looking at.
So not just second semester, so first?
Correct.
Because it's one and two, so that whole senior year. That's exciting.
And I don't know if you remember or not, but we, there was a community health sciences summit. And this, these courses and these pathways to actual jobs are a result of the discussion in that community. Summit where lots of people from TNCC, from the community, from the health sciences, you know, industry, where they're saying, we don't have people to fill these certain positions. And some of the certifications that are coming out of these courses are to fulfill that need within our community. So these are very, it's our first walk into that direct pathway to a career for a student who may not be college bound but can come out with an excellent career. So we'll, you'll find out a little bit more about it and the cost involved, which everything generally has a cost associated with it if you're taking a new direction. But you'll find out more about that at the next budget meeting as well.
It is all exciting.
I know, what if you approve for all audiences? Right, we can do it.
Are there additional questions?
I got one more.
Okay, Dr. Bears, let, let.
I was trying to be patient.
Missed you down and then I'll start to go back to you.
So I think this is excellent and I appreciate all the. I'm curious with fifty of these. I did to students that really want that, have it, hold in mind that it is. How do we get those?
We do a lot of advertising of the online electronic tool. And we do make paper copies available for those who would prefer a paper copy. It's a constant conversation. This is, as you mentioned, a great tool and a great resource. And it's not, when you're planning your schedule, it's not just one meeting. So we have many events and counselors are constantly talking with students. And this document comes up all the time. So it's, it's a continual conversation from sixth grade through their senior year, actually fifth grade, because they start, they start being introduced to it in their fifth grade year for their sixth grade year.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out, I'm looking at the redline version and I'm looking, this is like the top of page six. And I'm assuming those were added in there about student fees. Student fee schedule is updated annually and fees may be reduced or waived for economically disadvantaged students and students whose family are undergoing economic hardships. Do we really make that, are we really upfront about that in the sense that we really encourage students, you know, just, you know, if you can't afford it, that's no reason not to take that course and take that exam, that we, we're here to help?
It is my understanding that we're very, we want to make sure that kids take the classes.
We want more of those kids, we want more of those kids in those courses.
So that's always a part of, even when we're creating new courses, for example, the health science courses, we're always thinking about how can we make sure that everyone can have access? So in the buildings, that's still a conversation that they're having with students because we want to make sure that we're aware of any roadblocks that they may have to taking some of these classes that they're interested in.
And Dr. Bears, taking us back to a conversation when we present the fee schedule every year for different classes. We had a pretty comprehensive conversation last year. And one of our things we said we would do was to put a hyperlink in the online Program of Studies to every course that had a fee that a parent could click on that, take them there and in that same link, they can fill out a form if they, if they're unable to pay the fee, so they'll sort of access to the class.
I'm probably more concerned about those parents who don't know what a hyperlink is.
Sure, and that's why we'll use paper as well.
You know, and I can see where a document like this, or even going, you know, clicking and checking on the clusters, if you didn't really know what was happening, it could be, it could be a daunting task. It could be overwhelming. So those are the ones that, that close contact is really critical.
Absolutely.
And maybe they're probably the hardest ones to get to close contact, I know.
Our school counselors do a really great job of working with students and trying to get that information connected to the home, whether that's by. And trying to get that information connected to the home, whether that's by, you know, connecting directly with a parent, or if they can't, we get creative.
I know you do.
How many languages do we publish today? We publish in Spanish?
Good question. I'm not sure. I, let me, I think it's.
Translated to Spanish.
Spanish and English.
Translated to Spanish.
Two.
Okay.
Any additional questions about the program of studies? We'll have an opportunity to ask additional questions on the 21st.
I just have one more comment, because it's such a comprehensive document, I look at this and I, I think we need those extra counselors.
I don't disagree.
Because, because you can't just have a document like this and then not have a counselor, the one-on-one conversations with students.
Absolutely.
To really delve into what they're interested in, the best options for them, like everything. The counseling piece is so critical.
And that's why that reduced caseload is so crucial. Thank you.
And then the other thing, do you, when you sit down with a freshman, do you, do they tend to, we've tried to fill out the whole four years?
Yes, that actually starts in middle school with the academic and career plan. We look at what the student's career goals are, what their interests are, and as we all understand, that changes from year to year, but that's why we look at it every year as well. So yes, we look at planning.
That can change.
Yeah, absolutely.
But it's just, you get a, yeah.
That's also a really great opportunity to remind students and, and educate students on what the opportunities there are that are available to them.
And parents.
And parents, yes.
Comments?
Thank you, you did a great job.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. I encourage all board members, as you have questions, as you go through the red line version and get this extra copy to help you to push those questions to us, so we can answer as many as possible in a, in a very efficient way. Thank you.
Well, and those online clusters are, they're online, so they're, I mean, you can, yeah.
Okay, moving on to item 7.3, award of contract request proposal number 20-14379, engineering services for Berkeley Middle School HVAC replacement and roof repairs.
Madam Chair, Mr. Snipes is here to present this item this evening.
Happy New Year and good evening to Dr. Heron School Board Members and Madam Chair. Tonight's agenda item is informational and is intended to provide you background on the RFP that was recently issued for the design and engineering services for roof repairs and design and engineering services for the HVAC replacement at Berkeley Middle School. The design of the roof repairs and the design of the HVAC replacement was included in the FY19 and FY20 CIP in the amounts of $296,800 and $381,892 respectively. A request for proposal, like I said, was recently issued. The RFP was posted on the James City County Bulletin, is probably emailed to contractors and placed on the JCC and WJCC websites. There are, will be evaluation criteria and a selection process, which will include the understanding of the project requirements, the depth and breadth of experience of the principal firm and their personnel, the firm's demonstrated ability to provide such services, and the experience of the firm in completing projects such as design of HVAC. The superintendent recommends that the board reviews the project information and be prepared to vote at the January 21st, 2020 meeting.
Snipes. Snipes, moving on to item 7.4, approved purchase request of guided reading kits for elementary schools in amount of $161,821.45.
Three items coming up one after the other that all are a result of our end-of-year spending plan that was previously approved by the board, and these are the items coming forward for purchase. And Mr. Walker is going to present the, the item on guided reading kits.
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board Members, Dr. Heron. And I also have the Elementary Language Arts Coordinator, Dr. Robin Moore, with me this evening, in case there are very specific questions about the kids. This purchase, though, with your approval, will provide leveled fiction and nonfiction books to support small group reading instruction in grades three, four, and five. Engaging high-quality and appropriately leveled books are the cornerstone for effective small group reading instruction. Each elementary school requested the number of kits based on their specific school's needs for grades three, four, and five. Typically, when we're talking a guided reading kit, just to give you an idea about that, each kit contains six copies of up to 200 titles. So imagine a kit arriving, one kit, approximately 1,200 leveled books in it, fiction and nonfiction. And typically, two to maybe three teachers can share a kit. Their actual hard copy, hands-on.
They're hard, but they're soft. Yeah, sorry. They're like little thin.
Yep.
Bob, the readers.
Yeah.
The readers, leveled readers. Each kit also contains an instructional teaching card for each title in the kit. It provides the teacher with instructions for using the book with a small group of students, as well as information about specific ways to support English learners in relation to skills and content of each book there. Thirty-four kits total are on the roster with your approval. Twenty-seven of those kits actually going into grades four and five across the nine elementary schools. With a grand total of roughly 40,000 books being infused into our grades three, four, and five, to put those books in the hands of kids and the teachers to deliver small group literacy. More?
Are there questions? Other questions?
I'm sorry, what was the price?
$161,000.
$828.45.
$161,000. I thought I heard a different number, I'm sorry.
I, I'd be interested to know the general content of the, the books.
Each, there's a mix of fiction and nonfiction books, and the books are written by the publishers themselves. They have decades of research, observational research, and classroom practice behind them, and the books, the content of the books is aligned to the leveled literacy continuum, their continuum that they've created, based on those, that, those decades of research. And that continuum is aligned with our Virginia SOLs.
Leveld literacy continuum, can you explain?
Correct. Leveled literacy continuum is going to be a list of skills and strategies that students will progress through from kindergarten through fifth grade and beyond into secondary school. And so it's a very continuous process, and that's where we get the leveling for the books.
So is this part of the reading language arts program, or is it e-reading?
It is part of the reading language arts program. Small group instruction is a very important part of our reading language arts program, but it's, it is one component of our program.
Yeah, I mean, I'm looking at the author, this is Fontis-Pennell, is that, is that right?
Yes, ma'am.
So actually, so each of the books that are in these kits, I taught grades one through three with Fontis-Pennell, but each of those books that are in there are actually written by an author, a recognized author. Isn't, isn't that correct?
A recognized author that's a member of the Fontis-Pennell team.
Okay.
Yes.
Makes up the publishing team.
Correct.
Yeah, they're, they're edited, but you're right, they're, they're written by, they're written by, the author provides, I know a little bit about this, the author provides a text, and then they rework the text so it fits into their level.
Exactly.
Of one. No, I won't ask that question.
I, I guess I, I do have a question. Having visited some of the different schools, like, for example, Matthewelli, that has a book room, I mean, aren't a lot of these books already in our different schools?
So these kits are new from the publishing company, and we're using them to update our already existing collections. Many of the books that we have in our existing book rooms are outdated, and so this is a process that we're undertaking to update those existing collections and, and freshen them up and make them more timely.
Well, and they use some of the leveled books in, in reading recovery as well.
That is correct.
Right. That begs the question, what are we going to do with the books that, that we're, you know, we're refreshing with new books? What are we going to do with the ones that need to no longer be in our libraries?
Absolutely. We're in our reading rooms. We do have a policy on disposal of, of textbooks, and so we follow those policies. And ultimately, we look for other homes for the books, and if we can give them to students or other places that we can dispose of them, we do our very best not to throw them away unless they are absolutely unusable.
Is this, sorry?
They're good, they are, they're, they're stor, they're well-written.
Yes, ma'am.
They, they really act like real books.
That's.
For the kids.
So this seems like a, a huge overhaul and, and influx, which is exciting and, and I'm sure much needed. When is the last time we did something like this?
The last large-scale purchase of ELA, English Language Arts Resources at the elementary level was back in 2002, I believe. Yes.
This is exciting.
This is extreme, I have goosebumps.
I know, I can see. And so then, just to make it clear, just all of our elementary schools have those book, book rooms.
I do.
They all have those resource rooms.
Let's not waste that long again.
Yeah, but this is exciting. So are there additional comments, questions, feedback?
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item 7.5, upgrade division security cameras.
Again, a part of our end-of-year spending, we are focused on one of the board's priorities, and that is security of our schools. Mr. Snipes?
Good evening, again. Tonight's agenda item provides you background and information, and for your review and future award, we're requesting that the division's security cameras be upgraded. This was approved in your year-end spending plan, as she said, in fiscal year 19, for an amount of $403,000. Replacement of analog cameras with IP cameras, Internet Protocol cameras, will allow, will allow the division to have higher quality pictures, will allow an enhanced analytics, where we can, intelligence analytics, and we can remotely manage and troubleshoot those cameras. Currently, Optec, which is a vendor under an annual contact with, annual contract with James City County, it will be doing a survey to go through our buildings and look, see blind spots and to determine where exactly those additional cameras are. We do have a camera standard for where we put cameras, but since schools are designed differently, we want to make sure that we're covering enough areas as we can. Again, the superintendent recommends that the board review this project information and be prepared to vote at the January 21st, 2020 meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Snipes. Wait, Ms. Yoncater hand off.
I just have a question. When I was reading this, I mean, we're replacing analog, I understand that, but I just heard you say we're, we're adding additional cameras to blind spots in buildings?
But, yeah, we're going to, right now, we have a camera standard where we put them in class, cap, hallways and corridors, cafeterias, certain areas, but now we're, since we have these additional funds, we want to make sure we're covering blind spots.
And, and will this purchase, will this relate, replace all of our analog cameras?
No, it will not replace all of our analog cameras. It's about 80%.
Okay. Dr. Beers?
Mr. Snipes, do we have the capability of transmitting images to local law enforcement, for example?
Local law enforcement, that have the opportunity, availability if we, if there was an emergency to remote in.
Good.
Only if given the opportu, only if given the approval, they just can't do that.
This is a huge security upgrade for us, and, and the place we will start first is our three high schools, who all have analog cameras right now, and that's probably where the digital cameras are most needed. And so that'll be our starting place and moving out from there. But it's a huge opportunity for, for the division to, to upgrade our security system.
Based on about 200 cameras at those.
And that'll be over the summer, or?
As soon as we, as soon as we get approved. Optec is out doing surveys as of today.
Ready? Perfect.
Questions, comments from Mr. Snipes? Snipes, are you here for the next one?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, so moving on.
There'll be other end-of-year requests coming as well, but this is the next one. And Mr. Landers is going to present our purchase of classroom wireless projection. Sorry, Ms. Ombi.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Heron. With this item, we are asking your approval of purchasing a classroom wireless projection system, which was included in the year-end spending plan. This would be the first true upgrade that our instructional technology standard, or classroom presentation, since its initial install 12 years ago. During this time, technology standards have changed, and standards such as VGA video connections are no longer widely supported. In fact, our standard teacher laptops no longer come with VGA port. This proposal will install a screen beam module at each teacher panel in every classroom that works with the capabilities built within Windows 10 to allow wireless control of video and audio for the teacher. It will also maintain wired connections for HDMI for those times when it may be needed. Instructionally, this change will support best practices by allowing the teacher to be anywhere in the classroom while also maintaining control of the classroom presentation. Excuse me, the total cost of this project is $483,430 as budgeted in the year-end spending plan, and it includes 648 classroom screen beam modules, 30 gym auditorium cafeteria screen beam modules, installation and training, as well as classroom commander software for the teacher control of the presentation. The purchase will be made using contract 156784 with Optec. Thank you, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
Sounds marvelous.
It does.
So it sounds like it's going to touch all 16 buildings in, in some way?
Yes. Yes, we're hoping to cover every single instructional space throughout the division.
Awesome.
Everyone for approving our year-end spending.
Yes.
Use of it.
Thank you, Mr. Landers.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to policies. Item 8.1, revised policy GBE staff health and safety. Mr. Baker?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Heron.
Worked.
Thank you.
That did.
We do.
Policy GBE staff safety and health. This policy was adopted in 1979 and was revised last in 1985. Our attorneys reviewed the policy, it was reviewed by the policy committee, it was also reviewed by Janice Fowler, the supervisor for health services, and it aligns with the VSB policy. We did update the term health director and changed the term to director of Peninsula Health Department to make it more accurate, thank you. And we added the term physician assistant, nurse practitioner, or registered nurse. Nothing's changed with our, our practice, and it's just a normal review of our policies.
Are there any questions for Mr. Baker?
The next policy is policy GBEG, workers' compensation, staff protection. This policy was adopted in 1979 and was revised in 2008, and our attorney has reviewed the policy and it was reviewed by the policy committee. It's actually covered under Virginia Code or the Virginia Workers' Compensation Act. There is no VSB policy GBEG. Nothing is changing with our, our practice, and we just consider this as part of our normal review. So technically, we don't have to have this policy because it is covered under code, but people might get anxious if you took away a workers' comp policy. The attorney said if we're going to leave it, he would recommend that we delete lines 16 through 18, because that was a, a practice and not needed in the policy.
Questions?
Answered mine, I was going to ask, well, where is this covered if we're cutting certain lines, and you've got it there, so, thank you.
Any additional question?
The next policy is policy GCBB, the Strategic Benefits Plan policy, and this policy was adopted in 1994. Our attorneys reviewed the policy, and, and per the attorney's recommendation, we wish to retire this policy. We also, it's, it's actually covered under policy GCBC staff benefits. It has been reviewed by our policy committee, and it was discussed at the most recent WJCE. So there is no corresponding VSB policy GB, Strategic Benefits Plan. There is a VSB policy GCBB, but it's actually regarding supplemental pay, it's not related to this issue. And this was just brought up as part of our normal review, not a part of any thing changing in our practice.
Any questions concerning that policy?
And the last policy is policy GCBC staff benefits, and this policy was adopted in 2008, and our attorneys reviewed the policy, and this aligns with VSB. in 2008, and our attorneys reviewed the policy, and this aligns with V SBA policy. It was reviewed by the policy committee meeting, and it was discussed at the last WJCE. And they recommended deleting line 11, that new or eliminated benefits require school board approval. And the reason the attorney recommended this, deleting this line was, an example would be if if like VRS made a change in employee benefits, there would be no need for the board to approve that because VRS did it and we had choice with it. The board, the attorney recommended deleting that line. And please know that the benefits that are impacted by the by the budget are presented, they are embedded in the budget, and they are included in the presentation when we discuss budget.
I was just going to add that. So any benefits that we add or delete would be part of the budget process, so it's not like it just, exactly.
Correct. So what's the value of this policy? Why do I need it? First sentence, okay. Second sentence, benefits provided, regulations?
I think it's the same thing as the workers' comp. I mean, you don't need that one either, but not having it says something or doesn't say something.
We didn't have it before 2008.
Now we do.
I think taking it away says something.
Yeah.
Especially if V SBA.
Because we're going to take away staff benefits.
Don't say that.
Yeah. Can't believe he just said that. Can we edit that out of the film?
I just don't, I mean, I just don't see why we, why we need to have it because we know we're going to have benefits, and I don't see where that provides any guidance. But I'm moving on to personnel actions 9.01.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
Thank you.
Okay. Item 9.1, is there a motion to approve personnel actions?
Madam Chair, I move approval of the personnel actions as presented this evening.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Sarza.
Mrs. Young.
Yes.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye. Item 9.2, approval of minutes from the December 10th, 2019. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the minutes from the meeting held on December 10th, 2019.
Okay. Question?
I'd need to, I'd like to recuse myself from this since I was not a board meeting member at that time.
Any further discussion?
Do you just abstain? Yes, thank you. Just checking.
Ms. Sarza.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ombi.
Aye. Item 9.3, resolution R-1-20, appreciation of W J C C principles.
Madam Chair, I move approval of resolution R-1-20 in appreciation of W J C C principles.
Second?
I second.
Discussion?
I would like to know what we do to appreciate the principles.
Oh, we do have an appreciation week, and we'll bring some information at the next board meeting, but we we do have an appreciation luncheon in December and throughout our schools, there are some activities where we start to show our appreciation of them. I think we had an online feed last year as well where we could all, do you want to? Yeah, sure.
Hey, they can, they can march in a parade.
That's right. That's right. Ms. Cook is going to provide more information.
Don't we ever read these out loud?
Good evening. So last year, as part of Principal's Appreciation Week, we actually extended it for a longer, surprisingly, 16 days. We visited one school each day, and we shared photos through our social media channels and our website. This year, we're looking at enhancing that even more. You may remember during the fall appreciation campaign, we had some profiles of different employees and had some questions for them that we shared through the newsletter and online and again through our social media. So we're going to be looking for opportunities to do that again with our principals January. And we will still visit all of the schools, but I'm not telling you what we're bringing this time. Thank you. Additional comments, questions? Hearing none. Additional comments, Ms. Sarza?
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye. Item 9.4, revised policy BBBC, board member oath of office. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move approval of policy BBBC, board member oath of office.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Sarza?
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye. Item 9.5, retire policy FBB enrollment projections. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that we retire policy FBB enrollment projections.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Sarza?
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
Moving on to item 10.1, board member comments. We'll start with Mr. Dowell.
All right. Well, thank you, and I appreciate the welcome that I've received from the board and from staff and superintendent. I also wanted to say thank you to Holly Taylor for four years of excellent service to not just Stonehouse District, but all of Williamsburg, James City County, and she's given me a lot of good advice on how to serve and fill her seat, and so I appreciate her. I'm looking forward to getting out there and visiting principals and students and seeing them hard at work. And so I just, I appreciate the opportunity to be here, and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to welcome you, Mr. Dowell. It's been a pleasure to work with you thus far, and I look forward to three more years at least. That's a reflection of me, not you. And then I want to thank Ms. Ombi and congratulate you for your reappointment as chair, and thank you for your service last year and in advance of your service in the coming year. You've done a wonderful job, and I look forward to serving with you.
Yes. First of all, I just want to wish our staff and teachers and families Happy New Year and hope this will be a great one for you and your family. Welcome, Mr. Dowell. And I want to thank this board for the work that it does. I'm looking at the time and appreciate all of the hard work that goes into making these decisions and thank Dr. Heron for her leadership.
Dr. Beers?
I also look forward to a productive calendar year with my fellow board members and welcoming our new board member for sure. And I also want to very much, I very much appreciate and want to thank all of the, all of those who are responsible for putting together the preliminary budget and listening to those Cost Center folks and doing the best you can with what, with what they have to say. But I, I know it's an incredibly time-consuming job, and I very much appreciate that. I also very much appreciate and recognize the power of our program of studies. It is phenomenal. Thinking back not too many years ago, I only had to make a decision about, you know, let's say I'm going to take one English class, one math, one science, and it's just phenomenal what the opportunities are for our students. And that's why it's so important for the students and the parents and and our staff to really make sure that they do appreciate the opportunities they have in the schools. Thank you.
Backwards. Yes, I just wanted to make a comment about about ROTC. It's a continuous program that I would like to see instituted within our school division. I think there's, it has a good support within the community and having, after having visited Kentucky and talking to ROTC people, we're very low down. I don't even think we're eligible at this point because of the huge, because, because a lot of it depends on economic. It's in every district, and we're, we are too wealthy.
Too much money.
But, but there is a program similar to ROTC that we're willing to pay.
There is one. We would just have to fund it. It would have to, the initial cost is about, about $160,000 the first year, and then it goes way down because you have to buy all of the equipment, uniforms, et cetera. But then after that, it, then you're basically paying for two instructors, for a lead instructor and that of officer status and then an enlisted person. But I totally support that program. It's an excellent program, provides great opportunities and discipline and builds a lot of self-esteem. It's a health and welfare program, program for students, and so I totally support that. So I'm on board with that.
On that. Bowser. I thank you, Ms. Young. Mr. Kelly?
I'd also like to welcome Mr. Dowell to the board. January's a very busy month. They're not all like this, so just hold on while you, while we get through January. It's a lot of commitments and a lot of activity and goes on in January. I would also like to echo what Dr. Beers said about the staff work today for both the program of studies and the budget. There's a lot of staff work that goes into preparing all that, and we recognize that. And we appreciate their patience as we ask questions. And I know that they, they've put in a lot of, a lot of good work to prepare for that and get that, and get ready for this evening. So I want to thank them for the good work, and Dr. Heron. I got lots of comments from staff about having two full weeks at winter break. So as we go into next year's calendar approval process, we might want to consider making sure we get two full weeks of winter break.
Doctor Murphy's in charge of calendar this year.
Keep making those notes on that. So I, I'm glad the staff, lots of staff has contacted me at least with the refreshing and the break and the, and getting away and so.
I forgot to say how much I enjoy being on the calendar committee.
So I just wanted, wanted to say that. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Ms. Hummel?
Yes, I'm going to be the sixth person to welcome Mr. Dowell. Thank you for being here. I wanted to also thank the city of Williamsburg, the city council for appointing me for four more years. So I took my oath of office right before one of our meetings earlier today. So I look forward to serving with all of you for another four years. You're stuck with me and Kira for three, so whatever, the mighty 10%. Anyway, I also wanted to thank the same people that everybody else is thanking for all the work that went into the program of studies and the budget. I want to take a moment to talk about the gentleman that came and mentioned Jamestown High School football program, because I think that is something that we need to think about. When a high school does away, maybe temporarily, maybe not, you know, I don't know, what is the avenue for the, the students that are interested in being, I mean, it's football. It's a pretty major sport for students in a high school not to be able to play, should they want to play it. And so I, I don't know what the correct avenue is or like who gets together, the A Ds, like what V H S L, what's worked in other high schools that this has happened to? I'm sure our high school's not the only one that has been in this situation before. But anyway, I just am putting a kind of a plea out there to maybe put some of our great minds together and figure out what, what have we already done, what's been done in the past, what's been done in other places that gives these, these students an opportunity to participate in. Football is, people can, can talk about the negatives with contact sports and everything, but football is just such a phenomenal team sport, and there are so many wonderful life lessons for football. And, and it, it's just one of those things that I would, I would want us all to think about. That's all.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel. I would like to welcome families and students back. And obviously, I have to welcome Mr. Dowell. And just want to thank everyone on the board for your leadership, and I think that we work well together as a team and that we've never lost sight that we're here for the students of the division. And so I just thank everyone for doing all the hard work to support our students, and we're only as good as our staff. And so thank you for giving us the tools so that we can make decisions that in the end impact our students and, and their families. And so wanted to mention that all of us are going, most of us are going to the Virginia School Board Association Conference next week, and many of us are meeting with our elected officials in Richmond, all four of them, both senators and delegates. And this time, our city and county funding partners, some of them will go with us to collectively advocate for funding and good stuff for our division. And so that's exciting. And so look forward to that. And Mr. Dowell, we have an opportunity to attend board member 101, which is wonderful. And so as a board, we'll get to learn more about what's happening at the state and national level with funding and trends and how it impacts education. And so it's so important for all of us to meet with other school board members across the Commonwealth and have a pulse of what's happening. So moving on to upcoming events. Special location advisory committee is meeting on January 9th, 6:30 at the James City County Recreation Center. And then, as I mentioned, the V SBA Capitol Conference is next Monday and Tuesday in Richmond. There'll be new chair and board member orientation on the 14th. The 21st Century and Career Ready Committee is meeting on January 15th at 3:30 here in room 309 in central office. And the Student Advisory Committee is meeting on the 22nd at 3 o'clock in the media center at Hill High School. An upcoming, have our second budget retreat on the 21st from 4 to 6 here in the annex, room 300, followed by a closed session from 3 to 4, also here in the annex, room 309. We will have a public hearing on the budget following that at 6:30 in room 300, followed by a regular meeting also in room 300. We'll have a closed session on February 4th, 4 p.m., room 309 in the annex, followed by work session at 6:30 in the annex, followed by, oh, and then a closed session. All, but so many things. The next closed session is on February 18th, 6 p.m. Finally, we'll move someplace else, and that will be at Mount's Bay. And then followed by a regular meeting.
So Madam Chair, on the 21st, the closed session and the budget retreat, if we could get that corrected, it looks, I don't think it's as, it's clear. So someone might be confused on, we're having a closed session at 3 and then a budget retreat at 4 and then a public hearing at, and then another closed section. See what I'm saying? Like, maybe they should be separate.
Session from 3 to 4 and a closed session at 6.
And then a closed session at 6, yeah.
At two different closed sessions.
Yeah, I just don't, I just, for transparency's sake.
You can tweak that.
Yeah, it should be three.
Two different closed sessions.
Yeah, two separate lines.
Have the, I'll look on the table.
No, it's on this one.
Maybe, but check.
We'll confirm all that. We'll confirm all that.
And so. We don't.
We don't. So we'll make sure that we do. And then looking forward for the 21st, obviously, we'll have the consent agenda, agenda items, the action items that we discussed tonight, the V SBA code of conduct, we'll all need to sign that. The program of studies, we'll have an opportunity to ask some more questions, and if we could get as much of those in advance to Dr. Heron, so the staff can be prepared to answer those, and then the contracts and approve the purchase. And then there will be an equity series as well on a strategic plan update on the 21st, another, it'll be a long meeting. Right? Yes? No?
Yeah, it's three though.
The content is still to be decided.
Okay, well, it's okay. Unless there are further comments or questions? Done? Okay, this meeting is adjourned.